...
Here.
Councilmember Gates.
Here.
Councilmember Shipp, here.
Councilmember Bennett.
Here.
Manager McKee.
Here.
Attorney Moore, here.
Please stand before the leaders.
All right, the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, good evening, everybody. We have a couple of proclamations to begin the meeting, so I'd like to ask a little word couple of please. Let me do proclamation. We have a proclamation made up Port Angeles week June 19 through June 27 of 2015, whereas cancer is a word that spreads fear throughout family and community, and whereas cancer is one of the most devastating words to hear from a healthcare provider, and whereas cancer is a disease that has touched the lives of countless people worldwide, and whereas cancer is a word that brings people together in love and support to fight, to find a cure, and whereas cancer is a disease warning threat opportunity for research and cure, and whereas cancer is a war we are fighting and winning many rounds, and whereas cancer is a word we want in the history of life to be feared no longer, and whereas corruptors, corrupt must international report Angeles invites the entire community to join together to dedicate this week to fight cancer through earnest advocacy, action, turning Port Angeles into pink. We therefore shall be known as Pink Angeles for these important days celebrating the success of Operation Offlight and their commitment to bring assistance to cancer patients and survivors. Now therefore I hand to Julia Mayor on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles to hereby proclaim the week of June 19 through June 27, 2015, Pink Up Port Angeles Week in Port Angeles and change the name of Port Angeles to Pink Angeles and call upon all citizens to work toward to dedicate this week to fight cancer.
We're going to cast out bears. This is one of the symbols of our week. This is cannot bear cancer bear, and they're named by Shirley for the inner group, and every sponsor of Pink Up gets a bear, but we'd like the council to have one also in appreciation for your proclamation. Pink Up Port Angeles has been seven years running, and we've been making good use of the money that's been donated. Last year we made thirty-nine thousand, and hopefully this year it's even better. We have a whole week full of activities that are going to be going on, so keep your eye on the daily news and listen to the radio, but one of the things that I'd like to talk to you a little bit about is this quilt. Isn't it beautiful? This quilt was made by a woman who was affected by cancer, and she donated this to be sold in a raffle to benefit Pink Up Port Angeles. Her name is Rida Rutter, and I had the privilege of spending a good deal of time with her this weekend and had a little bit of talk with her, and she was so impressed that we sold so many tickets. People love it, and they love the words, the words of love, care. Shoot, can't see them all.
Could you pass us?
Anyway, it's all support words there in that quote. So we thank Rida for making the quilt, and she said that she's going to make one for skin next year, so thank you so much. Enjoy your can't wear cancer bears.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Leslie Robinson come up forward, please. Okay, this is a proclamation in recognition of Revitalize Port Angeles, whereas it began as one short Facebook post by Leslie Robinson in October of 2014, which became afterwards was profound. One post on social media sparked the interest of many and burst into a movement that united our city. Revitalize Port Angeles has revolutionized the concept of city unity, and whereas Revitalize Port Angeles continues to reach out to the people of Port Angeles, to encourage citizens to take pride in their community, inspire residents to discover ways to breathe new and exciting life into the heart of Port Angeles, and whereas their positive efforts to make the city more beautiful through projects to spruce up Port Angeles during the beautiful Port Angeles month of May can be seen throughout the downtown and the city and enjoyed for years to come, and whereas their team of volunteers, whereas their team of volunteers they inspire grows, as does the interest and the limit to unite the city through cooperative efforts to encourage positive attitudes of residents, bring to the attention of the beauty of our city, and to truly reflect on the potential of our great town, and whereas they host a website posting photos that highlight the beautiful and before and after pictures of places that have benefited from the group, and to spreading the positive efforts Revitalize Port Angeles made to improve our city, including sprucing it up with fresh paint, the group continues to spread the attitude and change the persistent and positive efforts all through the service of volunteers, and whereas Revitalize worked around the clock during outside magazines online best town contest to express to the world that we are the best town in the United States, although we didn't win the contest, we came away a brand new city, united, loyal to our community and our area. Revitalize Port Angeles showed the world that this little city is ours, is special. Now therefore I hand to Julia Mayor on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles to hereby commend the outstanding efforts made by Revitalize Port Angeles, and less than a year they have formed and developed a multiple, multitude of ways to improve our city. Thank you for your efforts to prove them to the rest of the world, for we already know that our town is truly great and will always be winners of the best town. Many of your efforts to improve this city never lose momentum, and to each and every volunteer that has assisted on projects, you have our appreciation, we can't thank you enough.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much. I do have one thing that I wanted to start with from this proclamation, we won the contest. I wanted all these people to come up here with you today because I wanted to emphasize the fact that we are truly a group, and Revitalize is an example of what can happen when a bunch of people want to get together and do something, and not talk about they should, he should, she should, or I wish. We decided to get together and do it, and we truly are a group. I know you guys hear my name a lot, but it is these people here and a whole lot of others who work on all kinds of different projects and are part of the spirit of Revitalize, which is our number one thing is to be positive, of course, I think everybody knows that by now, but I especially want to thank the council and Kat Yanni for his incredible support and helping us with volunteers and just being a just great part of our efforts, and Nathan, Nathan has been, I can't even tell you how much help he's been to us, and Shirley comes to all of our meetings, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that too. And Cory, Cory, that's a whole other thing. Cory, and credit for all the emails and comments, listening about things that I think we need to do this, we need to do that, so anyway, thank you, everyone, for all your support. Without the support of the community and the city, we could not have done anything near what we've already accomplished, and we are just getting started, so thank you very much.
Okay, congratulations, everyone. Next is called a comment, and we have Dan Vaden, is that right?
Yes. Hang on, Dan Vaden, I live at 207 Wall Street. I'm not sure if my comments is exactly what the agenda tonight, but it's concerning the water shortages that we're soon to be facing this summer and the drought that's going on. I'm pregnant, my next statement from our audience, I'll go sit down, I believe we do not have a ban on fireworks yet in the city, is that correct?
We can have a ban in the year, if opposed in 2016.
2016. I'm concerned about 2015. We're having extremely great weather, we're having historical lows in Elwha River on water supply, things are getting dry here. Every Fourth of July, we have fires scattered throughout this town, but the local fire departments go around trying to put out brush fires, last year there was a house fire too. I'm really concerned, what I'm asking is the latest current conditions that the City Council and the Ex emergency ban this year on fireworks on the Fourth of July, please give it consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Cook.
You said Tony Cook, right?
No, Dr. K.
Oh, excuse me.
Hello, I'm here. Good evening. You are really a remarkable council in that you provide this open public comment period and so patiently listening. We appreciate and thank you for this. As you address your budget for the next year, you have an opportunity to reallocate funds for fluoridation to beneficial social programs. The city clerk notified us last year that your contract with the dental services foundation was without provision for termination of fluoridation, and therefore this practice of fluoridation would be continued past the required date of May 18, 2016, unless the city takes an action. We now request that this council make a determination to terminate fluoridation and terminate the contract as of the date contract requirements are satisfied. As documented previously, benefits for fluoridation of drinking water in today's world are minimal to none. Centers for Disease Control, Finance, Researches, Brunel and Carlos, in 1990, a national study found a possible benefit of just six tenths of one tooth service per person as a possible benefit for fluoridation. Exhibit one that you have in front of you gives you a copy of the relevant parts of that study, that gives you the relevant parts of the study that was done by, oh, next paragraph, sorry. As documented previously, benefits from fluoridation of drinking water in today's world are minimal to none. Centers for Disease Control, Finance, Researches, Brunel and Carlos, in a national study found the possible benefit of just six tenths of one tooth service per person, and that exhibit one, Washington State Dental Health Survey from University of Washington in 1995, came up with the same result at the state level, a statistically insignificant benefit of maybe only point six five tooth service. For those who hold to the belief that fluoride reduces cavities, and for those who believe that fluoride is needed, a belief we believe without foundation, there is today more than enough fluoride from other sources in the form of diet, dental products, pesticides, beverages, and medication to satisfy any reasonable demand. Turning to exhibit two, you're going to be seeing a graph. This is page forty-nine from the National Research Council's Fluoride and Drinking Water Report of 2006. This graph shows the relative contribution of fluoride products to people of different ages. Looking at that graph, you'll see the herringbone pattern at the bottom of each column is the amount of fluoride from drinking water, assuming fluoride is at one part per million, so today that part of the graph, of the bar, will be smaller by thirty percent. Succeeding segments, as you look at that particular graph, are toothpaste, background food, pesticides, and air. A heavy cigarette smoker can absorb eight tenths of a milligram of fluoride per day from pesticide, not as much as that person would get in over a quart of water. Pesticides are not only applied to living crops, storage areas are contaminated, another reason to buy locally. The bottom line there, of course, is we are awash with fluoride, we don't need to add any more. Fluoridation, in addition, produces harm, a fact now recognized reluctantly by federal agencies concerned about opposing the public health service policy to promote fluoridation, safe and effective, is the mantra of the authority figures our doctors and dentists look to, but this is finally being exposed as false doctrine. No one can deny our national epidemic, forty-one percent of teenagers, teenagers nationally showing overdose effects as dental bleusis. EPA in April lowered the recommended levels for fluoride in water, but their response is insufficient, because EPA admits that severe bleusis will still affect one in every two hundred people. Over thirty-six studies now show a relationship between fluoride and lowered IQ in children. We are doing harm to our people, and we are panning for it in our budget. Please terminate the fluoridation contract and divert 2016 funding intended to use for fluoridation beyond that essential cutoff date to social services. Thank you.
Tony Cook, 73 Silver Road, Port Angeles, Washington, but it's actually West of Joyce. My concern is a discrimination against a group of veterans I belong to at your city park. I've written to every member of the council, I spoke with Dan McKean in person, no one responded. I emailed you, no one responded. My second email was returned, so I think he blocked my email. Dan McKean promised me that he would go to Veterans Park and give me an honest answer, he's ignored me. What the concern is, is draftees are a legitimate group of veterans. I've applied to the park twice, starting late 2014 and early this year, I was in March, and I was rejected most time to put blacks honoring draftees. Now I know, I know why it happened, because there's a political person in town who's very well connected, and he doesn't like compulsory military service. You all know who I'm talking about. I don't know what to do anymore. He won't respond, he won't give me your reasons why this is valid, just tell me why it's valid. I had a reporter call me yesterday from a large newspaper, and he said, what are they doing down there? I says, I don't know. He says, well, why would they reject draftees? I said, I don't know, they won't tell me. Now, there's some flaws, flaws in the system, and one of the flaws is, when I was at the meeting for the Parks Department with your volunteer Parks Commission, one of the ladies in the group who voted not to support what I was doing had never been to the park, never been to the park. Cory Delacat should have said, let's go to the park before we vote, he didn't do that. They just took the recommendation of Collin County Veterans Association at face value, they didn't question it, and there's something horribly wrong. Why can't draftees be recognized in a veterans' park? It's a public veterans' park. Well, I was born in a segregated state in 1946. I remember as a boy walking around in some of these towns, seeing signs on businesses that said, no coloreds allowed, and some of the areas used a different version of colored. The, I lived in Chattanooga, the city that we were competing against in the early sixties, they had the same policy. If a black lawnmower came to town, they had to stay in a black side of town, they could have stayed in a white side of town. I remember, there's a funeral home where my parents live in the south, that will not be, point being discrimination is a nasty thing, and this council ought to stop that. Draftees are a legitimate group of veterans, I've shown a legitimate group of veterans, and we are identified differently by the military, we have a prefix US, if you join the army, you're RA, we are a legitimate veterans' group, and a group in town who doesn't like compulsory service should not govern who gets in a veterans' park. I feel insulted every time I go by that park, but what I see is a sign, no draftees allowed, and you need to change that, and all I ask is, give me your reasons why you won't, or change it. Thank you.
Sorry, I haven't told you the next name, but is it Vanessa, or 153 Yous, do you have any regard for this?
Hi, I'm Nancy Farrell-Sprance at 153 Victoria Drive, Lake Sutherland. I am born and raised in Port Angeles, so were my parents, and I'm eldest of eight children. I'm here to represent the Farrell Marine Life Center, and I want to tell you a little bit about my family. Our three major things in my family were, God was first, food was second, and education was third, always, and all of us are college graduates, and the reason I'm beginning with this is because when I was in high school, I had Art Farrell as a teacher, and then when I was at Pennsyl College, I had him as a microbiology teacher, and then when I'm at the University of Washington, so what happened there was, is that he made it possible that six of us girls from Port Angeles got scholarships to the University of Washington King County Hospital at the time, or the School of Cytology. Now it's too bad the Pink Up girls are gone, because cytology is screening cells for cancer, so that was my career, and the six other, five other gals with me, it was, it was their career also. So I came back to Port Angeles in January and thought, you know, I wonder how Farrell's doing? I mean, I hadn't really had any connection with it whatsoever, and they invited me to, well, we had a contest, classes sixty-three and classes sixty-one, trying to raise money for the new facility that they're going to build, hopefully, and it was very fun, and then I was involved in that, in the auction, but the bottom line really is for me, is to say to Port Angeles that Port Angeles, when I was in high school and my siblings and still, was one of the best high schools to graduate from in the state of Washington, and we have an obligation for these little kids out there, who I was privileged to go on a tour last Thursday with Farrell, and there were fifth graders from Great Wolf in Swim, and there were twenty-five of them, and we started at the top of Peabody Creek, and they measured five different categories of the water in Peabody Creek, and Farrell offered twenty-five schools in Swim in Port Angeles, and over a twelve-hundred miles those kids walked, because it's a three-mile walk, to learn about the water and the creek that runs by us every day, and no one pays too much attention to that, but I see in those little kids the interest in marine biology, and it's, it's a big and up-and-coming and fabulous career for both girls and boys, and I've always been so proud of Port Angeles of serving education and giving the best education that Port Angeles can afford, and I believe totally that Port Angeles can still afford that. Thank you.
Judy Hager.
Hi, I'm Judy Handgardner, eighteen fifteen East Fourth Street in Port Angeles, I'm here to speak on fluoridation. Many worries and a growing mistrust of this government has begun to awaken the Port Angeles residents that are consuming the fluoridation that the city has been adding to our water supply since 2006. With the recession squeezing budgets and the cost of fluoride increasing, some of that fluoride is imported, our residents have been more willing to take a second look, asking themselves, do the studies really show the fluoride is helping in prevention of tooth decay? People that have heard that there is nothing wrong with fluoridation, all of a sudden are hearing that kids are getting too much fluoride, and the reason is there's an increase in our vegetables, fruits, and juices, as well as other beverages. Teeth are our window to our bones. Many doctors, scientists, and dentists, including Dr. Bailey of the Public Health Service, mostly agree that fluoride works best when applied topically, directly to the teeth with brushing. However, the increased amounts that we consume with other sources does have long-term effects on all parts of the human body, and one must look at the documented studies performed by independent labs that are done here in the U.S. and abroad. When you review those documents regarding the pro-fluoride, please ask yourself, who did the studies and who benefits from those studies? In February and April of this year, a list of priority study was presented to the City Council that would eliminate external agencies known as social service funding, too much needed agency, two are the much-needed agencies, the Human Society Service and the Health and Human Services. The city would save an estimated cost of fifty thousand dollars annually from halting fluoride use. Let us put that money to a good use for the community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm also here to speak about Pharaoh Marine Life Center, and
Leslie, we get your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, 124 West Misty Lane. Okay. I am here to ask you to renew your contract with Pharaoh because, well, for several reasons. For one, they continue to engage in community programming and community partnership that enhances our, our talent and awareness of the watershed education that they provide, and the host of other things that they do, that they're very engaged and active in the community, and a great part of that. They have a great reputation, I think anybody who you ask will say that that's, it's great that we have that facility there, they love it being on the pier, they bring people from out of town to visit, they have kids, you can do a birthday party there, so they have an excellent reputation, it's just an enhancement to the reputation of our city. Both, as far as being, they're also smart business people, because a great deal of their efforts are done with volunteerism, so they are able to operate with much lower costs than they could be, and the volunteerism is very active, people like to help, and they have, they are able to get the volunteers that will help them and continue to help them operate in the future. They have enormous educational benefits to the city, for example, residents and K through twelve students are now a great more, a great deal more aware of what a watershed is, and how the actions that we take can impact the health of our creeks and our harbors, and why it is so important that we are careful and why we pay attention to those things, and they've done a really great, great job of bringing that into the public awareness. They continue to provide other enormous educational benefits, environmental awareness, and teach people about the harbor and the sea life that makes this such a special place to live, and they continue to improve city lands, they develop, they have done all that work at Peabody Creek, which I'm sure we all know about, and that was fantastic, also they have their salmon smolt study that they're doing on tongue, on tongue water, which is invaluable, and in short, there are, oh, no, one more, sorry, they're also working towards building a new facility, that's the biggie, which would be an enormous benefit to our community and a revitalization of the waterfront, it will drive tourism, it will drive economic development, and the reputation that it has now, if we could have a bigger, better facility in the future, it would, it would just, it would be so much more wonderful from what we have already, so I think, I think we really need to support them a hundred percent, and renew the contract, so that's what I'm asking you to do, to renew your contract with Pharaoh, because they're doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It's all right, you get closer than Segway does. Tammy Napio at fifteen Pierce Road. I am the director of a program hosted by Peninsula College called Upper Bound. It's a pre-college program for low-income, first-generation high school students on the Olympic Peninsula. So our grant requires us that we offer a six-week summer program, which was an only started today. It's primarily academic. Our primary objective with students are to not only see them graduate high school, but to persist and complete a post-secondary educational degree. So we offer in the summer math, science, technology, language, really any academic supports that can help them through remediation services for their next year in high school. However, science classes every year have been a struggle for us to hire staff and pursue curriculum that is engaging for students. That isn't the typical experience that they have in their traditional high school classrooms. I mean, the goal really is to get students thinking about science-related careers. So until last year, I would say that we were minimally successful. And then last year, through a partnership with the Farrell, we were hugely successful into selling science-related careers to students from this area. And we know, I'm sure that there are many people in this room and some of yourselves that were born and raised here. So we know that we return home. We go away to school and we come back. So the students in my program are going to come back here with their science-related careers and degrees and they're going to get back to the community that they were raised in. And if it wasn't for Farrell, I can say that every one of our students is influenced. But I would say primarily girls, which is interestingly. And I think that they have gotten an opportunity to see science as something that could be fun, that it's not about sitting in front of a classroom, teacher lecturing, and filling out lab reports. And that's what we're about. So I'd really encourage you to renew their contract. You should give them more money, really. But they have been such a blessing to our program. And when I can show you on video proof that students said the best thing that happened to me today was participating in the ocean athletic class, I mean, that's what it's about. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's all that's signed up to see you need to speak. Does anyone else want to come to the microphone and make a comment? I'll close the public period. Anybody else to read the agenda?
I do not have any light items, but I do have one item that I'd like to share with you for just a second. Mr. Cook is right in that he did come to my office and assess his item with me. I did tell him I would take a site visit to Veterans Park and do some research and get back to him. I did, in fact, shortly after that, I did take a trip to a walk, actually, to Veterans Park on Ice Bay, grabbed our parks director, went down to the park and wanted to get kind of a feel for the plaques. I had been down to it before and I wanted to look at the plaques and items that Mr. Cook was talking about. And I also did some research into the approval process or recommendation process and what really happened with this item. And again, I want to apologize to Mr. Cook because I didn't close the loop and get back to him with that. I would be willing to meet with him and get back to my office and sit down and discuss what my findings were when I did that. I will say this is a rather emotional issue thing I do remember, because this was a little while ago, and again, my apologies. I do remember it was an emotional issue, not just with Mr. Cook, but on both sides of the issue. You know, I understand Mr. Cook's desire for the recognition and apparently there's another side that really desires not to have that separation and to recognize, you know, those that served in the military uniformly, not divided into those that were drafted and those that weren't drafted or enlisted and listed. So, but I wanted to make a public statement and let you know that he did come to me, you know, quite some time ago, and I did not get back to him, so my apologies. And I will follow up with that.
Okay, I'll move to that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to, I'd like you to hold council tonight and see if we could bring up on our agenda a second public comment period during Port Angeles City Council meetings. And my idea is immediately preceding council reports.
Okay, we're going to make one change in the agenda as we move forward. I think that people are interested in the water uptake regarding the state's water sources this summer. So we will move that information, the report to J. Two, other considerations.
Mr. Mayor, two things were brought up today. The ban for the fireworks for the water, so I wonder if in our discussion of the water, we can maybe discuss that as well. And also determining the fluoride contact, if we can bring that up at another meeting coming up soon, because I really would like to get that. If it's true that if we do not determine the contact, that it will just go on, I think we need to address that.
And there's conversations with the city manager earlier to speak about that and he's preparing some information for him to the council regarding whether or not we will forward a vote, a public vote, or what the council's recommendation might be regarding fluoride.
Okay, and one final thing. I did watch the video that got done a while back, and if we do not talk directly into our mics, it, we can't hear it very much. So I would just suggest that everybody try to be clear so that folks who want to watch it at home can actually hear us. Thank you.
All right, we have a public hearing scheduled for six-thirty, so we'll move right into the public hearing. It is the resolution to drop capital facilities and transportation improvement plan. Mayor, members of council, we don't have a pre-invitation tonight. We had a work session with council, a last meeting, we had another briefing for council, so we didn't think a second one. Our third one was necessary. What we do have is there are a couple of small changes in what had been seen previously. Two items, a water system plan for sixty thousand dollars and an Elan National Park Service water bank for ten thousand, for a hundred thousand dollars have been moved from what is the capital side over the maintenance and operations side. Both of those are plans, they're studies, and they cannot, under state law, be capitalized. So we moved them over to the other side so we can have them legitimately listed so they follow along and we can see them. And in addition, there is one other item that was added under general government on page F four of your agenda, project GG fifteen oh two, which is the Noah Farrell Center. That is in what is the parking lot for projects yet to be funded. In that way, if we don't list it as a capital project, it is not eligible to be, to receive potentially grants to the state of Washington via the city of Port Angeles. So that item has to be handled. With that, Tess Addison is here and I'm going to answer any questions you may have.
Now, the Noah Project is essentially for the capital project.
Yes.
Build the facility.
Yes.
Unrelated to the one with the testimony on here, you write a contract.
Correct.
Other questions? We've got some phones in the public hearing. Not able to open up the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak? Behind the proposed capital facilities plan, application plan, please come to the microphone and give your name and address. Anybody wishing to speak? Please come to the microphone.
Anyone?
Anyone? Come to the microphone, give your name and address. Not any subject, Mr. Cook, okay, so we're only regarding the capital facilities plan.
Although I could talk about that too. I'd rather respond than Dan McGee's.
Not in the middle of a public hearing. Last request, anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. May I read the resolution? A resolution, the city council of the city of Port Angeles, adopt the transportation improvement program.
Move adoption of the resolution as read.
Remove second and third discussion?
I just wanted to comment that, again, that I think this facilities plan is a fresh air, doesn't have to articulate burdens, and I think this is a good start.
I'd also like to mention that I'd like to thank the public for the input that we've had over the last few weeks and prior to that, the staff putting this together, the concept of having a parking lot, I think is a real good concept and a good way to set up the program so that the public has a much, much easier way of seeing what kind of things are on the radar screen pending available plans.
I agree. This has been a cumbersome project every year, and it's been difficult to understand and control. It just kept burgeoning bigger and bigger every year. There were just, and it was easily misunderstood that we were going to spend all this money when in fact, most of the projects were not funded or underfunded. So this makes it efficient and understandable, and I appreciate the direction we're going in. Thank you.
Now, hold the favor of motion, aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. We move the consent agenda. Does any council want to pull that into the consent agenda?
No, but I've got a couple of questions on scene fifty-one, number seven. And I guess I just wanted to verify if I was correct in understanding that we only got one bid for that, for the ground maintenance service?
Yes.
Just one. Okay. And then the other one was the second one, the pad-mounted electrical transformers. And I know we had a government estimate. With our government estimate, there wasn't a total lifecycle cost, and I wonder if that's something that in the future they'll be doing for this kind of stuff or not, or was it possible?
Lifecycle cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, most of the, I thought in Paulson's, I think here, we've always, part of our review process has been to consider the upfront cost and the lifecycle cost of transformers because inefficient transformers do consume additional utility. So we do save money by, by ordishing, even though possibly costing more upfront, but less expensive down the line.
Right. And is that, I guess I was just talking about the government estimate. Is that something that, there was no, I guess I know probably hard to estimate what the lifecycle?
Yeah, they have to, they have to provide details on the transformer, the efficiencies of the transformers that they're proposing, and we really don't know that they actually support, submit their bid. We know upfront cost of what the transformers should cost, but then when we get their specifications, we can do some calculations to come up with the efficiency.
Thank you.
I just wanted to know for the record that I sit on the Farrell Marine Life Center Board as an ex-official city representative on that board. The city's been a partner of Farrell from the onset, I believe, and we've had a city council representative for a long time. I became a non-voting member over a year ago, and I don't think I have a conflict and will even have a contract.
Okay, anything else? May I read the agenda, consent agenda? City Council minutes for May nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, expenditure approval list from May twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen to June fifth, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of three million, five hundred forty thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. Fourth Street, fourth street, smart water improvements project, D R zero-three, dash two thousand and nine, finally sentenced. National Park Agreement, Farrell Marine Life Center contract, marine purchase, three hundred the olive refuse containers contract, M E C fifteen dash twenty-six. Groundskeeping services for line operation substations and the wastewater treatment plant, contract S B C one-five dash two-seven. Equipment purchase, pad-mounted electrical transformers, contract M E C fifteen dash sixteen. Public works and utility reorganization associated pay increase.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Good move, and second. Hold the favor of motion, aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Thank you. We're ready to use section five, excuse me, give other considerations. Jail contract amendment number three.
Oh, Mayor, before I did that.
Mr. Mayor, I believe there are two resolutions that require the capital facilities plan and transportation improvement plan. I believe we only read the one on F seven, but not the one on F four.
I think we read it. You're correct. I did not see the one that I heard. Let me read the resolution then, for the resolution, the city council of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, adopt the capital facilities plan for the years two thousand sixteen to two thousand and twenty-one.
Hold the approval of the resolution.
Second. Remove the second, any discussion? Hold the favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Then we move on to the jail contract amendment.
Mayor, council, I'm actually very pleased to bring forward this amendment. As you recall, as long as I've been in this office, some of the first things I had to deal with were our escalating criminal justice costs. In fact, years before that, for quite a few years, we've been dealing with the challenge of our rising criminal justice costs. They've been far exceeding most of our budget estimates. And I was pretty excited in two thousand and fourteen, when we sat down with the county and sheriff Benedict, we were able to verbally come to an agreement during the budget process for two thousand and fifteen to come up with a flat fee jail contract that set a reasonable price going forward and predictability in the future. And as you recall, as we ended up in two thousand and fifteen, and they reviewed their numbers, the sheriff wasn't sure that we'd end up with the agreed upon price during, what we came up during the budget process in two thousand and fourteen. So all we had was an agreement for the first half of the year after what we agreed upon for that contract. Sheriff Benedict worked really hard trying to make it work, and in fact, came back to the city just a little while ago and said, we can honor the amount for the entire year. So what I bring forward is a amendment that covers all of two thousand and fifteen, the agreed upon price of six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, as a flat fee contract. We're very pleased and we think the council will be very pleased with that, and it does provide some predictability as we go forward and balance the rest for two thousand and fifteen also.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to publicly express my appreciation for the cooperation Sheriff Benedict has offered the city in giving, placing a cap on our jail costs. We have been battling with escalating jail costs these past few years, and it's been, it's just been out of control and it's been very difficult. Every year, our budget is squeezed because of unexpected, unanticipated accelerating jail costs that have exceeded our budget year after year. So I'm very grateful for this opportunity and appreciate the cooperative thinking and the offer that has come from the sheriff, and I appreciate the inter-agency cooperation. This is good for the citizens of our community and it's good for Port Angeles. Thank you.
General, I would move we authorize the manager to sign contract amendment related to jail contract amendment.
Second.
We move the second, any further discussion?
I also wish to commend Sheriff Benedict and the county in general. I think that these are difficult issues for our community to find the resources for, and I think working together is the best of all possible solutions. And I think the city and the county are doing all that they can, and I wish to publicly thank Sheriff Benedict as well.
And I know that the staff reported also asks that we direct the city manager to negotiate with the county for a jail contract for two thousand and sixteen and beyond, so I'm hoping that that happens as well. To me, these costs are still pretty high, so I'm hoping we can do something about it just now.
We are already entering discussions and have been for a couple months now, so hopefully we can come back to the council with some future predictable. So hopefully we can come back to the council with some future predictability also.
Okay. Here's motion on the floor, hold the favor of motion, say aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Thank you. I don't remember if I said J two, but I meant I two for the drought, uh, water gap update. So let's move into the water gap presentation. I did want to discuss it. Did I say that?
You said agenda, right?
Yes.
No, I think it's only two slides, so. Yeah, I'm gonna do it in here. Too many dominoes here over there. There we go. Okay, so, uh, tonight I'll be, uh, discussing, uh, a lot of questions that have arisen and, uh, about the, uh, drought, uh, that we're facing. Uh, what I'll be doing in this presentation is first going through some facts about our municipal water system. Uh, there, there's a misperception out there of what we can do, what we can store and if we're not storing. So I'll go through that. Then I'll be going into a discussion of some of the other water users, uh, that use the river water. There was a question about fishing wildlife service previously. I'll discuss that. Uh, next, I'll go into some expectations, uh, about the river flow for 2015. Uh, these will be, uh, some city forecasts and, uh, I'll show graphs from NOAA, uh, their forecast of the river flow, uh, through the summer. I'll go through the various drought stages we can expect. And then I'll go through the final section. I'll be discussing the, uh, water system plan that we have in place. Now, I don't have a whole lot of slides. Um, what I did hand out to the, uh, council, uh, before the council meeting was three pages of pretty much facts, uh, discussion items I handed out to, uh, the audience so you can read through. And just to make sure that, uh, you know, I don't misspeak and, uh, I'm gonna read through a lot of this, but there will be just some discussion items, um, as we go through. First off, what I talk about today, uh, does not correlate to the Dungeness River system or the Morris Creek. Okay, so if anybody is living in Morris Creek or Dungeness, what I'm about to say does not correlate to, uh, to you all. You, it's a completely, they're completely different basins. They have very different characteristics and they will react differently, uh, through the summer. So this only deals with the Elwha River Basin, which is shown here. Uh, and again, this is the outlines of the national park. Uh, so the Elwha River Basin is about one-third of the national park. Quite, quite a large, uh, water basin. Okay, so first I want to talk about the water utility mission. Uh, it comes from the, uh, Port Angeles Municipal Code and my, my duty to the residents is promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the users of our system in accordance with standards established by the city, county, state, and federal governments. So there are state rules that guide what I do and can do, and they can come in and tell me to do things differently at any point. As, uh, the state also, one of the things I want to talk about is the city does not own any water. The, uh, water is owned by the state of Washington. Um, the state grants rights and they grant permits. So the state's granted in 1927 municipal industrial rights to the city. Um, and they also granted a water permit in 1974, which allowed the, uh, the city to build its rainy well. That water permit is a development permit. It was originally, supposed to, um, it was originally supposed to, uh, be, uh, terminated in 2020, but due to removing the dams, we have requested that development permit be extended to 2015, 2050. And I'll, I'll go into a little bit more discussion on that when we get to future plans. Uh, the ci- city consumes two and a half to three and a half million gallons, uh, of water per day. Now, when I go through this, there, there are two different, uh, flow rates that I'll be talking about. The river is always measured in cubic feet per second, but our water system, usually water systems are measured in millions of gallons per day. So in that paper that I handed out, whenever I reference a million of gallons per day, I also reference the cubic feet per second. So you can compare that to river flow. So if we, if we go to river flow, that, uh, daily consumption, uh, it comes to 3.8 to 5.4 cubic feet per second of water is what we consume. So roughly four to five cubic feet per second. Now, the rainy well can continuously pump 6.7 million gallons per day. So that's about double of what we consume. That 6.7 million gallons per day was measured during a low flow period of the river. Uh, the production of the rainy well is guided by the river flow. So if there's very high river flow, there's more pressure of the water pushing into the, uh, the upper. But this was at a low flow, so, uh, that's, uh, one of the worst cases. And we still had two times the, our daily consumption that we were able to pull from the rainy well. The treatment, treatment plant, uh, can treat 11 million gallons per day. So that's about four times our consumption rate. So that should not be an issue. The one thing that, uh, a lot of folks don't realize is that we got 18 million gallons of storage for the city of Port Angeles. So if you figure, uh, an average day of 3 million gallons per day, we've got six days of storage, uh, for city, uh, city residents. Okay, uh, now, doing some comparisons here, uh, the lowest flow, we, we really looked at, um, the last 15 years, uh, flow rates and snowpack. Um, and 2002 was where we hit our lowest flow for Elwha, Elwha River in the last 15 years. And that was, that was not due to snowpack, but that was due to, um, late fall rains. But it still went below 200 cubic feet per second. So in that year, we had 192 cubic feet per second, uh, which was the lowest flow in the last 15 years. Uh, so we're correlating that to how much of the water, uh, how much water the city actually uses. We consumed about 2% of the river flow, uh, based on that low flow in 2002. Now, as I said, uh, as the river goes lower, the, um, the rainy well, uh, takes a little longer to recharge, the, the ton of influence there. So if the, uh, you know, as we expect the river to go probably below 200 cubic feet per second, um, we would, if required, just extend the pumping, uh, time of the rainy well. Uh, right now, we pump it for about eight, eight, uh, hours per day. So we only pump and treat the water, uh, during the day. Um, if the water recharge is a little slower, we could extend that to 10 hours a day or 12 hours a day. Um, but really no impact as the, uh, not significant impact as the, uh, as the river decreases. At present, we expect to have, uh, adequate water supply for consumption. And I'll go into some, some other statistics that we're gonna show. One of them is the NOAA forecast for the, for river flow. So other water users of the Elwha, um, at the last discussion at the council meeting about water, uh, there was a question about fishing wildlife service. They do pull, uh, water from wells adjacent to the river. Uh, they are downstream. Well, they, they do have some, uh, pumps upstream of the rainy well and we ask them not to use those. Uh, so they, they pump from wells that are downstream of the rainy well. They pump about 2 million gallons per day. Now, that is non-consumptive water use. What happens to that water is they pump it from below the, uh, the river. They bring it up to surface. They run it through their adult, um, growth pond, the pond where they, they grow their fish. And then it just flows back into the river. So it's non-consumptive. Um, but what it does do is provide, uh, water for the fish to, uh, to live. One of the things, uh, I'll be talking about a little, little later on is the temperature of the water significantly impacts the fish viability. Uh, the next water user that, that everyone knows about is the industrial water line. Uh, currently, uh, Nippon is the only user of the water line. It used to also be, uh, Nippon and Rainier. Um, there are no costs to the city for the state-owned water provided Nippon, the court, you know, the state. The city does not own the water. The state owns the water. But we do, uh, sell, based on the agreement, the city sells Nippon the right to receive untreated water through the industrial pipeline. That's $15,000 per year. And that lease expires on 31 December of 2019. Uh, part of that agreement is that, uh, Nippon also, uh, manages the pipeline, repairs it, inspects it, surveys it. Um, and, uh, there are no costs to the city for the management of the, of that line. Nippon uses 8.5 million gallons per day, uh, of water. So let's compare that to some of the, the flows. So, uh, as I said, the city uses around three to four million gallons a day. Uh, Nippon uses, uh, roughly 8.5 million gallons a day. And low flow for the river in the last 15 years was 192, um, millions of gallons of, of day. So it's about, uh, about 8% of the river flow.
Craig, could I cut in on you for a second, please? Uh, what's, I don't understand, we've heard back and forth about meter being installed on this industrial intake. Uh, can you tell everyone what your, uh, numbers are? Where are you citing your numbers from?
Right. The, the numbers that, uh, we are citing here are the numbers that, uh, are recorded on, uh, Nippon's meter at their plant. It's a, uh, partial flume meter, very accurate. Um, so that, we're, we're fairly, very confident that that is the volume of water that Nippon is actually using. The National Park Service has a meter, uh, up at their Elwha treatment plant and an insertion turbine meter that is actually reading less volume than Nippon is actually using. So we, and the issue with that turbine meter is that on low, slow flow, it's not as accurate. And one of the things, uh, I'll be talking about on our water system plan for the future is installing, uh, water meters, calibrated water meters. Um, they'll, they'll be calibrated at the factory, installed at both ends. So we know how much is going in and we know how much is going out. And then we can determine what losses there are in the pipeline. And that, that, I'll begin with that in the discussion a little later in the brief. As I said, uh, Nippon pays all costs to survey, maintain, repair, and operate the pipeline. Um, they have reduced consumption by four million gallons per day over the last 10 years. And they do recycle quite a bit of their water, um, in their plant.
Okay.
No.
Just, just question.
Yes.
There's an article a few days ago about perhaps new product line, I have to go. Have there been any discussion with you from one of any other staff to suggest that that new, potentially new product line would have a future reduction in conservation of water?
Yeah, we, we don't have the specifics of the new product line, but, uh, with our discussions with Nippon, uh, the, the great amount of the water used is in the pulping process and not the paper making process. So, and, and with any new technology, uh, they're normally built using less energy, less resources. So if they do bring a product line, uh, a new product line into service with new equipment, you know, the expectation is probably use less energy and less water. But again, I don't have the specifics on it. I just have this on.
Craig, is the follow-up, go ahead. Thank you. Is it, cause a follow-up to that question with the, uh, shutting down of one of their boilers, are they using, are they still using the same volumes of water a day? Or is this, uh, are these numbers just for one boil that they're using?
Well, they, they, they're using water for, uh, both the paper mill and their CoGen plant. So, uh, you know, as one agrees and the other has come up with it. Um, but this is the, when one of their, uh, let's see, when one of their lines went down, their, uh, usage went down to about 6 million gallons per day. So as, as they take the line off, there is a reduction. Um, but they do, uh,
But the CoGeneration brought it back up to the, your, your.
The CoGen does use additional water. And, um, yeah.
Who's over there?
Yeah, next line. Okay, I'll get into the discussion here in just a second. So the next part of the brief, I want to talk about, uh, river flow expectations. Um, some of the assumptions, I'm going, my, my assumption is I'm going on worst case for the summer. Uh, so my assumption is based on no rain for the next several months. Um, cause I don't wanna, uh, wish for the best. I don't wanna, you know, work to, to worst case. So on the sheets, um, that I handed out, we did some windows of when we expect river flow to hit certain levels. Um, the first river level is 500 cubic feet per second. We're expecting 15 to June, 25 June. Pretty much hit that. I think it's went below 500, uh, yesterday or today. Um, and again, when I reference these cubic feet per second, I also have millions of gallons per day. So you know, uh, what kind of, uh, both of those flow rates. Now, when I go through these, these windows, uh, of when we expect to hit the flow rates, it's based on, um, this chart here, which is developed by NOAA. It was their forecast, 120-day forecast. It was also built on 2005, which was a low snowpack year. So we have, uh, we use the, the river, uh, level, um, drop in that 2005 period and adjusting it for, uh, into, uh, 2015. We also, also worked into our average low flows for the last 15 years. So based on those three inputs, we came up with these windows of, uh, time when we expect, uh, the river to hit these various levels. And I, in the paper, it talks about 500, 400, 300, 200 cubic feet per second. So let me talk about, uh, this chart here. This was developed by NOAA, 120-day, uh, forecast. Here we are right now, pretty much have been tracking with their forecast of where we're going. In October, this October period right here, that is roughly 200 cubic feet per second, right there. Uh, it starts at 99, so zero flow or when the river is empty would be somewhere right in that, that period. So that, that's right around 200 cubic feet per second. I am estimating that we will very likely go below 200 cubic feet per second. So what I did on this chart here is kinda, is estimating what, if we did do a trend, uh, combining this and some of our, our other low flows, when would we hit 100 cubic feet per second? So I went and estimated that, cause I wanna, I wanna know, uh, have my, I wanna have my, uh, water guys tracking, um, that data. So, okay, so, uh, just going in, so we're looking at 400 cubic feet per second in early July, um, 300 cubic feet per second, uh, for the river flow, uh, somewhere late July to mid-August. Now, 300 cubic feet per second, as I noted down here, comped with the, uh, Elwha Palm Tribe, 300 cubic feet per second is where fish, uh, viability starts to be a problem. And the volume of flow, uh, there, there are several things that happen when the flow volume reduces. One, temperatures go up. When temperatures go up, there are parasites that grow in the river and on the fish's gills and they have trouble of removing the oxygen. Uh, so the temperatures go up, diseases increase, and oxygen levels decrease. So at 300 cubic feet per second, um, the hatcheries, uh, folks concerned with fish viability start getting concerned. Uh, for 200 cubic feet per second, which is, you know, we, we hit that several times in the last decade, so it's not out of the ordinary. Uh, we're looking at, uh, mid, mid-August to, you know, October, um, hit that level. Now, 200 cubic, 200 cubic feet per second, that could inhibit, uh, fish from actually swimming upstream. If the water spreads out across the entire river basin, it gets very shallow and then, um, there are issues. and then there are issues with not only temperature, disease, oxygen, but actually the physical ability to move upstream. And so on this 200 cubic feet per second, as I said, NOAA was predicting 200 in the September timeframe, right there. And that's pretty much what we're predicting too. Now, if we don't get rain in the fall or in the summer, I went down to one more level and then throughout, hitting 150 cubic feet per second, somewhere between 15, middle of September to the middle of November. And since the river has never gotten that low, down that low, and we don't really have a good understanding of the, how the river basin will rain, will it steady off at a certain, steady state at a certain point? We don't know. But one of the things I talked to the city manager is, you know, with every rain cloud, there's always a silver lining in there. I always look for what can we learn from bad situations? And there are a couple of things that I'm really excited about. You know, how can you be excited about drought? I can't, I'm an engineer. So, one of the things we'll be looking at is gathering a lot of data. This is a phenomenal year to gather data in a worst-case scenario without the dams. And it'll be, it'll be critical that we gather this data for several reasons. One, we'll be rebuilding, or re-updating our water system plan that Byron talked about as far as budgeting. And this data will be critical to look into the future. What do we need to look at, what do we need to plan for? And give us a better understanding of how the river, the river basin, which is quite large, how does it react over time in those snowpacks? And we'll build into that, you know, what, any infrastructure change we need to make. Also, we're in the water system plan, which, and I want to take a side note here, CH2MIL will be the contractor who's going to be working with us to read, this is the water system plan. Anything you want to know about the plan is in the notebook, it's a bio here. But CH2MIL was recently recognized in 2015 with the Stockholm Industry Water Award for their research and development of reuse of water, all different types of water, wastewater, education, technology. So we do have a good contractor, again, look at ways to utilize water and then we'll be asking them those questions. The other important thing about this year is we will be, at some point, we'll be taking back the infrastructure that the National Park Service has constructed. We have a new surface water intake structure, fish screen, new pipes and pumps. And so this will be a really good year to understand how that new infrastructure will work in a low-flow environment. And so it will be a great learning tool for our water staff to watch as they, as they adjust the system for these low flows. So there are good things to come with this drought. But I joke ahead. So with those good things, I'll get back to some of the not-so-good things, and those are the drought stages. So stage one, we're really already in, is, stage one is about in-house preparation by the city. City council has the authority to declare it, and in fact, in May, at a work session, we said we were going to move into it. Stage two is voluntary water conservation and education campaign. Again, the city manager has the authority to declare stage two, and I am recommending that we do implement stage two. Again, it's water conservation, but the most important thing about this is an intense education campaign through the residents of Port Angeles, not only about their water system, but the Elwha River in general, the fish impact. So they have an understanding of what their water use has on the system, what their water use has on the river. And we'd like to move forward with a very intense education campaign right now. Stage three is, the city council has the authority to declare stage three restrictions. And that's outdoor water restrictions, normally on even outdoor watering days. Again, we, again, encourage maximum water use, conservation, and reduction. And what we'll be looking at is when we hit 300 cubic feet per second, which would probably be, you know, mid-July to mid-August, we'll be looking at, you know, where the river flow is at that point, how the rainy well is operating at 300 cubic feet per second. There should be no issues with the rainy well. We've operated at that level many times. Most years, it goes below 300 cubic feet per second, there are no impacts to the rainy well. But as I said, at 300 cubic feet per second, there are impacts to the fish. So the discussions with the hatcheries and the tribe will continue through the summer as we review these conditions. Stage four is where, again, city council authority to declare stage four. That's a mandatory outdoor restriction, central water use only. So washing cars, watering lawns will be prohibited, washing sidewalks and streets. And we'll have to review what water uses are allowable. You know, vegetable gardens will probably be allowable use. But again, we'll be discussing that with city council on where those, where those restrictions lie. For stage four, again, we'll review that at 200 cubic feet per second. When it hits for three consecutive days, I expect that the river will hit that point and probably go below that. And again, the fish runs upstream could be, could be impacted. And then at the bottom of this page, with discussion with the Elwha Palm Tribe, I did just a quick update on what they expect for fish runs this year. This, especially, they expect this on the Dungeons, unfortunately, is a big pink salmon run. I guess they go every other year, and the Dungeons is expected to have a big one. Dungeons will have some issues with fish movement and viability due to low flows. Also, chinook salmon will be running July and August and spawning in September. And then the chunk salmon will run in October, but that probably won't be an issue. So the big thing is the pink salmon that come every other year, this is their year for coming in. And so there could be issues with that, that migration.
Could I make a comment here?
Yes, absolutely.
When we get to stage three, since the city is pretty normal to do with water, but we're less impacting on what our responsibility is to the fish, seems to me at stage three, we should have a working committee, the hatchery folks and the private folks with the city folks to keep abreast of what the fishing situation is. So it seems to me a prudent, at stage three, that you set up an ongoing meeting room that could answer those questions.
Sure, yeah, at the staff level, we are meeting that meeting with them on a monthly basis. We just had our last meeting last week to go over their concerns with river flows. And that will continue throughout the summer. But at 300, yes, it will be critical that we meet and we invite the council, or maybe they could have a presentation with the council while we discuss that. It will be coming up in the next month, month and a half, based on our targets.
I'm just suggesting that we actually formally put that into our stage three protocol.
Okay.
That that's what we do.
I've got an additional question also, Craig. The lower Elwha, is that served actually by the city or does that come off of the Dry Creek Water Association?
The lower Elwha Palm Tribe, they have two ways to clean water. One is from the industrial pipeline. The other is from wells that they have in the hatchery. And currently, they're using the well, well water.
Thank you.
And then by using well water, as I said, it doesn't have any parasites. And the big thing is it's very cool. By the time the water goes through the, down the river, through the industrial pipeline, it just heats it up a bit, plus it's on to a treatment plant. So they, at this point, they're using well water. Okay, going on to water, what do we go forward from this and how we plan for the future? As I said, we're updating the water system plan. And two key things that are going to be addressed is, one, this was developed when the dams were in place. So now we have to reanalyze our system without the dams. And the data that we're going to gather from this year is going to be very, very important to look at our infrastructure and how we go about, how we do business going forward. Again, we're installing meters on the industrial pipeline to get a better indication of what Nippon, we know what Nippon is using, but we don't have a good handle on any water losses considering in the industrial pipeline. I touched on it before, but we do have a water development permit for our rainy well. That was granted in 1974 and was expected to, we expect it to expire in 2020. But that 1974 agreement was, was developed before the dams discussions took place. And then the dam removal took longer than expected for all the agreements. So 2020 is way too early for us, the city, to fully develop our water development requirements. The river will be moving because it's now a little more natural, the dams are gone, so that has an impact. So we have submitted a request to Department of Policy to extend that permit to 2050. That gives us time to analyze what the water, what the river, how it's going to migrate and change over the next several years. And allows a little more development, possibly a second rainy well to back up the first one. And then just going right on, again, the second rainy well. We started preliminary investigative planning on what it's, the second rainy well costs, where it could be located, how it could be set up, what sizes. It would be used to back up the existing rainy well. It could be cited to better take advantage of migrations over time of the river. And, but it will take three to five years to develop if we do go forward with that, that infrastructure improvement.
Good question, Craig. The second rainy well, our current one is flowing, is getting, gathering water under the influence of surface water. Would the second one be the same?
Yes.
And this is where I would like us to, I guess, consider modifying some of that. Because part of the issue is that because it's under the influence of the surface water, we have to treat it. It's, it comes out almost presumably clean and yet we still have to treat it because it's having that influence of surface water. If there's any way that we can avoid that and not have to put chemicals in and then take it out?
Well, yeah, we'll look at that, we'll have to, that would, we'd have to have the city a much deeper well or drill some other kind of well further away from the river. But a rainy well is designed to act, to absorb, to run under a river system and pull, pull from that, that river water at a shallower depth.
Yeah, I just know that since the regulations changed and we had to treat our water, people are saying, actually, water just doesn't taste as good as it used to. So it would be worthwhile, I think, to look at options.
Yeah, and that'll be part of reviewing this plan. What are all the options out there to pull water from different locations?
Craig, you have other questions? When the dams were in place, I think it was the first real drop that we had since the dams were completely removed. Could we have, I don't know where we are, but could someone have regulated the cubic feet per second by greater releases of water from the reservoir over the past years?
The, when I talked to the National Park Service, they are adamant that they never regulated the river flow based on the levels that were coming in. They called it the, what's the name?
Run of the River.
Run of the River, that's the one, yeah, it's Run of the River. So whatever volume of water came into the reservoir, that's the amount of water they released. Now, they did, they do say that there was one year where they did release extra water due to temperature. They, the temperature going downstream was getting too high, so they released water from the lower parts of the reservoir to reduce temperature. But, you know, when, when the National Park Service owned the dams, they say that they, it's Run of the River, whatever came in went out. Now, you know, back several decades when it was the mills operating it, I'm sure that they adjusted things as needed, but based on the last 15 years that we looked at when the National Park was running it, they did not adjust the dam release for the flow.
Thank you, that answers that question, I think. My other question is, we, the city did a study of the rainy well here, a year, two years ago, regarding the silting, possible intrusion into the well that is blocking water access to the well. What is the outcome of that, has that had any effect?
Yeah, there were some reduction of rainy well capacity since it was put in. But it's not clear at the moment whether it's due to sediment release from the dam that is building up within the cobbles of the river or whether it's because of the river migration further away from the rainy well. So these tests will, are going to be continuing over the next couple of years to give us more data to better understand what is happening underneath and around the rainy well. And one of the things we have to, when we do these tests, we realize that tests have to be done when the river is at a certain flow. Because if you do tests when the river is 200 cubic feet per second and then you do another test when the river is at 800 cubic feet per second, the productive, production capacity will change based on the river flow. So that's one, one thing we learned in most recent tests. So we'll be adjusting our testing protocol to ensure we test at certain river flow levels. But right now, we can't, we, there's not a clear indication of whether it's sediment or river moving away. That will not be determined as, you know, over the next two years or so.
How frequently are we going to test that?
About every six months, we run sometimes.
So we have a baseline, what was it, a year and a half ago, two years ago?
That's correct.
And so we have a baseline, so we've noticed a gradual diminishing of water in the rainy wells, is that right?
Well, we thought there was a diminishing, we, you know, we measured 6.7 cubic feet, 6.7 million gallons per day previously. But most recently, when we got the results back, it was up around 8 million gallons per day. And then we realized, while the flow of the river has a major impact on, especially when you have a lot of flow pushing down, it does increase, the higher the river flow does increase the productivity of the well. So we'll have to calibrate when we do our tests to a certain river flow, so it's, there's a standard.
And as a clarification, one last question, certification. We call it a well, or is it truly just a trench, it's just absorption of water from the ground?
Correct, it's, they, there are horizontal, you know, a vertical well and then horizontal infiltration pipes that extend under the river.
I think both people have visual, we like it.
So the water will percolate, the river water will percolate down through the cobbles into these pipes and then they get pulled out to the larger well and then goes into our system.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, we've been doing this transition to a new water system based on the well, the dams coming out. And maybe it's quite fortunate for us that we're early in that process and we're facing some tests that will allow us to really understand the future of those systems and what we need to do to protect water supply at the city. So, you know, I think in some ways, as much as this is, you know, a real crisis, it's also a great opportunity to know what we need to do in the future.
Absolutely, it's that silver lining that I was talking about. There's going to be so much to go forward with. Then there are a couple of things I just wanted to talk about. They're not in the paper, but they're, I grabbed them in some newspaper and some emails I got. One of them was about a desalinization plan. So we ran some numbers and did some research. A desalinization plan for a 5 million gallon per day plant would run about $50,000 to $100 million. That's the price, I take about five to 10 years to develop all the regulations. Just the building of something of this size... Um, just the building of something of this size would, I don't even want to talk about the utility rates. Uh, but also the operation of a, uh, desalination, desalination plant is very expensive, high consumption electricity, and then there's replacement all filters. So, you have very high dissection costs, very high operation maintenance costs, really not in the cards for Port Angeles. Uh, then there's a discussion of can we build a large volume reservoir somewhere to store up? Right now, we have 18 million gallons per day, that's six days of storage, but can we build something, um, somewhere else to store a larger volume? Um, so damming the river is not an option, um, now that we've removed the dam. Uh, there is something, and PUD is looking at this from Morris Creek, but called off-channel storage, where you pull water off the river, uh, during high flow, you pipe it to some other piece of land that has been dammed up or blocked up, where you then store the water for low-flow period. Um, most involved then, you have to find suitable land, um, that's available, purchase the land, obtain state permits, uh, pain easements, build reservoirs, build pumping and piping system, uh, required to get it to the reservoir and then back to our system. So, based on, the Dungeons River was looking at this, uh, and they're talking about 30 to 40 million dollars to build a reservoir that just will, uh, supply water, um, to replace the water pulled from agriculture. But 30, 40, 50 million, uh, depending on if there is land out there to build some of that reservoir, talking five to 10 years to develop, uh, and with that cost, again, the major increase to utility rates. So, um, those are some of the things that were brought up by residents, I just wanted to address them. Um, anything can be built to solve the problem, uh, you just got to have the money to do that, and these are two options that would be very expensive and, uh, will take quite a, quite a long time, uh, to do. So, we're looking at other alternatives on, are there better ways to pull water from the river, or better ways to pull water from the river, the, the basin in general? And then one of the things I want to look at at CH2M is probably the, uh, company to do that is, uh, water reuse. Uh, there was suggestion, um, Tyler Auburn, uh, can we reuse the, uh, the wastewater effluent for Dipon? As I said, you can do anything, it just costs money to do it, because you have to pipe it from, uh, the wastewater treatment plant to Dipon, and it's, it's fairly well-treated water. Uh, but we'll be looking at, uh, CH2M to, to see if there are any other innovative, uh, things we can do with our system to reduce water, find more dependable water, and reuse water.
Well, 20 years ago, when we were doing our first, some of the first watershed planning, one of the ideas was to identify aquifers and inject water during the high-flow period into the aquifer, so it could be, uh, kept in the aquifer and then well out, and, uh, the aquifer would be a, a clean source of water. So, that was another thing that was looked at, uh, with some early watershed planning and, uh, how to also protect fish resources.
Craig, I was wondering if, um, during all the years of study and analysis prior to the federal government, uh, electing to remove the dams, was there any predictions or, um, plans about just this type of thing? Do they foresee that maybe there was going to be some shortages of water and, and what their predictions might have been?
Um, I, I have not seen any, heard anything, um, not that I'm saying it's not out there, there, there probably is something out there, but, um, we, we just did some basic data gathering on the last 15 years, because that was, that information was really available.
Craig, I've got another question. Uh, from what's been presented tonight, I have the fear that our neighboring water districts are going to probably hit below what we hit, and is, is there any anticipation of actually asking them to join this conversation that's going to include the Lower Elwha? Uh, I'm thinking, I don't know if we were able to ship it to SWIM, but are we able to connect to Dry Creek? Are we able to connect to the PUD system? Are, are we going to be, are, are we going to, are we going to have water that possibly could help some of our neighbors?
Uh, Dry Creek, uh, we, we've had discussions with Dry Creek, and they also pull their water from very, uh, near the river, so I don't see Dry Creek having a problem. Um, as you read in the paper, the upper Fairview, uh, area, uh, served by PUD off of Morris Creek, they're already in stage four, and that was directed by the Department of Ecology. Um, they are in discussions with Department of Ecology, Department of Health, and the city, uh, because they would like to utilize some of our emergency water right, um, through this drought period, which would allow them to continue to pump, uh, a pretty small amount of water from Morris Creek, but enough, uh, in combination with some wells they, they drilled to, uh, ensure that those neighborhoods, uh, can, uh, have water. We discussed it at the, um, Utility Advisory Committee, but a lot of, a lot of it's going to be dependent on what Department of Ecology, Department of Health say, uh, the Lower Elwha Pond Drive was involved in the discussion, these discussions, and they were amenable to it. Uh, one of the things that they were looking for is, as PUD pulls water from the creek further up, that PUD provides additional water for fish lower down, so there's a net zero loss to the fish. Um, so, PUD and the private are in conversation, and PUD with Department of Ecology, Department of Health, uh, are in conversations, um, and that could be something, once, if everybody says, "Yes, we will allow it," then, uh, the city would have to expand our water, some of our water documents to allow them to use our emergency water right. And right now, um, you know, we, we don't have the ability to use Morris Creek right now, so it's, it's just a paperwork thing for us. And I think it would be a good, uh, good thing to, as neighbors, to help them out. Dungeons, uh, oh, and now, PUD does, we do have a mere time with PUD, so we do have, they do, uh, buy water from us, and, and as we hit these stages, they must abide by those stages too. So, if we go to mandatory water restrictions, all the customers served by our water must also go to, go into the drought stages, so we're in those discussions. Getting water all, all the way to SWIM is not, it's just not there, there's no piping, and, uh, Dungeons is going to be an issue. I went to the forum, and, um, it has very, very different characteristics than the Elwha River Basin, much smaller. Uh, we're, we're blessed that the, the river basin we have is a good third, you know, a third of the National Park, it's huge. And so, all that water, even though it slows down, there's a lot of water collected in subsurface, and it continues to flow to the lowest point, which is the Elwha River, and that's where we pull it. So, I guess in some way, um, I'll go on the record and say the river will not be going dry. Um, we will have water for municipal consumption, though we probably be asking residents to conserve as, as a good, uh, neighbor policy, and, you know, we'll have to, there, there will be impacts to fish if we go to low 200 cubic feet per second, fish do get impacted. And, uh, usually it's just a couple of days in a year, but at this point, it could be a couple of weeks.
Any other questions?
Um, yes, I know that, like I said, we brought up about the thing with fireworks and water, the drought and drying. Is this something that we want to, we discuss? It seems like, um, I know we banned the fireworks for next year, but things are really dry out there.
My point is that, gee, is that something that we could, is it impossible for us to do at this point?
In terms of fireworks, my understanding of laws are that any changes to the fireworks laws at the state level take a year to take effect. So, in order, in order for us to do something locally, I believe there'd have to be some sort of declaration of an emergency. Um, I don't know, quite frankly, how that would happen, or what the mechanism for something like that to happen would be, but in terms of the actual fireworks laws themselves, uh, the individual municipalities aren't been able to make those changes without, and going through for at least a year.
So, uh, you know how there's those, let's put it a fire, it's low, we, and high?
Right.
But where are we today?
At this point right now, uh, this, we're still at a low level. Um, this, those levels are set by the state, and the state will look at various conditions, they look at fuel, moisture...